Good evening and welcome to the May 25th, 2021 Gilloom Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and recite the pledge? "A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, equal to liberty and justice for all." Okay, so first on the agenda tonight, we have a list of public comments. And so I'll start with the first one. I apologize, there's a lot of tabs open and comments, so just give me one second, okay. Uh, this public comment is regarding a statement made by Benjamin Goze at the Board of Education meeting on May 4th, 2021. Mr. Goze begins his statement by lamenting on an AP English lesson he was a part of. He started his memory with something that took me completely by surprise. Quote, "I posted a short essay arguing in favor of the right of private businesses to discriminate against homosexuals," unquote. There are a few things that I take issue with. Number one, LGBTQ rights are human rights. They should not be debated by teenagers for the sake of an English class. Speaking on behalf of someone who is proudly part of the LGBTQ plus community, I find this said in very poor taste. Mr. Goze tries to defend his argument by saying that he fears his heterodox beliefs will no longer be tolerated. But what Mr. Goze does not seem to take into that homophobia is wrong. Plain and simple. It is not something that we could be, that could be argued or debated. Topics like these that come up in class just open up the floodgates of students assuming that if they are civil about their prejudice, it's okay. He claims his fears for students to be alienated. But by debating on the topic of human rights, you are doing just that. You are making students feel as if their rights are not deserved because you have to even question them in the first place. I understand what Mr. Goze was trying to get across, but the way he went about it was quite harmful to a large population of the Gilloom School District. Thank you, Isabel Better. A public comment number two. My name is Sonia Jerome. I am a concerned student at GHS. While watching the Board of Education meeting that took place on May 4th, I could not believe the statements made by Benjamin Goze. His homophobic hatred and bigotry that he spewed at his, at the meeting was not only hurtful, but should never have taken place. I'd like to reiterate that a man who feels comfortable enough to say the things that he did in this meeting has absolutely no place on the board. I'm incredibly disappointed in the school for allowing his statements to take place. I'm a Black queer student. I'd like you to imagine how it feels to know that people who believe you should be legally allowed to be, allowed to be discriminated against in private business is in a, is in a place of power at my school. To make matters worse, Benjamin Goze is on the Board of Equity and Diversity Committee. Why in the world is a homophobic man on the diversity committee? Another thing, if Mr. Goze feels comfortable enough to say things like this in a public recorded meeting, what do you think he's saying to his friends? What do you think he's saying in the comfort of his home? I'd like to say one last thing. You can have every GSA meeting, every Safe Adult, every ally, but at the end of the day, if the people running this school are bigots, then that means nothing. I hope you take action and truly understand the severity of what happened. Best, Sonia Jerome. Public comment number three. To the Gilloom Board of Education. Having listened to recent conversations about the work of the Diversity and Equity Committee, as well as the creation of the EDI Administrator for the District, I feel compelled to share a story that I think shed light, sheds light on the need for the work to continue and the desire of us, for some of us to make it happen. I've been a 7th grade social studies teacher teaching early American history in the Gilloom Central School District for over 23 years. I've even taught one of the current board members a number of years ago. In my tenure here, I've always tried to teach students about the different perspectives and opinions that exist around historical events and people, and provide as many different sides of an argument as possible for students to begin to form their own ideas and opinions about historical events. My job has never been to judge, but to provide students with a foundation for them to feel safe to use their voices, to ask questions, to think. Sometimes the topics have been sensitive in nature, but I feel to ignore them is a disservice to students. If we truly want our students to walk out of our classrooms with as much knowledge as possible, we can't and shouldn't shy away from the hard topics. We should not deny the fact that past events have a direct impact on what we're seeing in the news today. As I say to my students, sometimes the conversations we have make us uncomfortable, but it's okay if we're learning from them. A few months ago, my class was learning about the beginnings of slavery in North America. I presented information to the class through a variety of different resources, including primary sources of what it was like for an enslaved person during the Middle Passage. I also included images from the Museum of African-American History and Culture so students could try to visualize what it was like. For those listening who don't remember what the Middle Passage was, it was a transporting of enslaved Africans from their home countries to the Americas. Conditions were brutal, demoralizing and, and dehumanizing. It was during the description of the Middle Passage that a student of color in class bravely spoke up and said that he was feeling really uncomfortable with what was being said, and it was just too much for him. I asked if he could elaborate on why he felt this way and he, uh, and what was, and what was told of the word slave that kept being used. I was horrified that I was saying something that made a student feel so bad without me being aware of it. I asked the student if he could stay back after class so we could talk. The student knew and could see that I was visibly upset. I had been crying before we talked. He comforted me and told me it was okay, but for me, it really wasn't. His mom showed up at the meet, the student is a remote student, and I was so thankful that she did. She shared with me how she teaches her, her children that slaves weren't just slaves. They were people, they had lives before they were captured and forced to go to America. Most often, that kind of information is never shared with students. She also said she teaches her children that Black history isn't something you should just teach about in one month out of the year. It is so much more. It was then, in that interaction with that student and his mom, that I was given the opportunity to understand how powerful the words are that we use, how each person has a different life experience that we can't simply brush aside. We need to have more of these conversations with someone who is knowledgeable and willing to facilitate them. These conversations can't be one and done training or professional development opportunities. It needs to be ongoing by all stakeholders. To deny or ignore the feelings and experiences that others have is not teaching tolerance or acceptance. The wrongs of the past cannot be undone, but are we supposed to ignore them and sweep them under the carpet because others feel uncomfortable? We are not indoctrinating students with misinformation as some community members have claimed. It's time for people to take their rose-colored glasses off and take a hard look at what is happening. Ignorance is not bliss. Maybe some people need to ask themselves why they feel so threatened about bringing to light the inequities of the Gilloom community. Sincerely, Colleen Sidig, 7th grade social studies teacher, FMS. Public comment number four. I am writing in response to the May 4th, 2021 Board Meeting. Specifically, Ben Goze's presentation towards the end of the meeting. I agree that different ideas and opinions are important within group discussion and decision-making. At times, this is important for understanding different perspectives, but there are certain fundamental ideas that are respected, especially when presenting, representing a public school district. Protecting basic human civil rights and protecting all students from discrimination is a shared idea that is non-negotiable in education. Ben references AP High School paper and support of private businesses to refuse sale of goods or services to someone that is gay. This debate regarding the legal rights of private business owners to discriminate against individuals based on sexual orientation may be a debate for people with differing views and opinions in the private sector. But Ben's support raises a concern here when representing Gilloom School District. Ben is listed as being a member of the Audit Committee, Business Practices Committee, and Policy Review Committee. So as a community, how are we supposed to know that his votes and feedback will protect equity for our LGBTQ students when he is voting on budgetary and policy decisions if he is willing to discriminate, support discriminatory acts against members of the LGBTQ community? Katie DePuro. Public comment number five. When will the mask mandate go away? Will it be done for the fall, next fall? Please show us the science that masks for, for children. There's plenty of science showing it doesn't work. Thanks, Theresa May. Public comment number six. To the Gilloom Board of Education. I'm writing on behalf of the High School Physical Education Department in support of installing a turf field at GHS. The proposal of this project would have a positive impact on our physical education program and the students at GHS. Our high school curriculum offers a wide range of activities that align with New York State Department of Education, Physical Education Learning Standards, Newly Revised 2020. Our department is focused on offering the best opportunities to our students, and having a turf field would not only expand what we are able to offer, but also a safe, well-maintained environment for our students to learn. Many members of our department have been teaching and coaching at Gilloom for numbers, a number of years, and we always look forward to being outdoors with our classes any chance we can get. We are very fortunate to have access to the fields on our campus. However, there are many times we are not able to use those facilities due to weather conditions, field maintenance, and athletic competitions. A turf field would have preset lines on it, making it easier to teach field hockey, lacrosse, football, and soccer. The preset lines would also loan itself to other activities that would require boundaries. We would also be able to have more than one class in a block to use the field due to the size of the space. Several times a year, our physical education program is displaced from the gymnasiums for school or community-sponsored events. Having a turf field further supports an additional teaching space to conduct our classes and deliver the intended curriculum without students losing valuable class time. I've spoken to other physical educators in other districts that have a turf field. They have shared with me some of the benefits mentioned above, as well as having a turf, uh, as well as having a field they can depend on regularly, which helps for planning and consistency when creating their curriculum for their program. In closing, I would like to thank you for taking the time to read this letter and to consider the positive impacts of having a turf field would, would be for all of our students in the GHS community. Sincerely, Allison Relia. Public comment number seven. As a community member and parent now of graduated student athletes, I strongly support the addition of a turf field at GHS. The benefits of having a district turf field far outweigh the one and only downfall, initial cost of installation. Perhaps 10 or 15 years ago, a turf field was deemed a luxury item for a district to install. However, today, we are one of the few suburban council schools without this needed amenity. The time has come to give our student athletes and community at large the facility it needs and deserves. A turf field keeps money in the Gilloom community instead of paying exorbitant rental fees for turf used at off-site facilities. I was actively involved in the Gilloom Girls Lacrosse Booster Club for a number of years. We worked hard to raise funds in order to rent turf time for our teams. This was a necessity because our grass, grass fields were often not ready until three or four weeks into the season. Additionally, many away games were played on turf and all sectional championship games were played on turf. Thus, our teams needed to practice on that surface. The game is very different based on the playing surface. In my years involved with the Booster Club, we pay, we paid between 3,000 and 4,500 per year on rental fees. While I am glad we were able to assist our teams in this way, it also created problems. Since teams had to travel to and from the rental, rented turf fields, the time student athletes had to commit was above and beyond the norm. My daughter often missed dinner, missed time to, uh, talking about her day with family and had to factor in time to get homework done. All these problems could be remedied with a district turf field at GHS, not to mention the potential, the income potential is a huge bonus. The field could be rented nearly year-round. I could easily go on listing the benefits of a district turf field as it would benefit so many students to the Gilloom School District. But I feel the main takeaway from this letter is for you to understand a turf field is not an extravagant item for the Gilloom Central School District to purchase. It will level the playing field and bring us into the 21st century. Thank you for your time and consideration, Lori McCollum. Public comment number eight. Dear members of the Board of Education, I am writing to express my strong support for the addition of a turf field at Gilloom High School. I graduated from Gilloom in 2018. While at Gilloom, I participated in lacrosse, four years on varsity, field hockey, four years on varsity, and gymnastics, six years on varsity. While my experience as a student athlete at Gilloom was very positive, even helping to prepare me to play collegiate Division One lacrosse, one major piece was missing, a turf field. My experience as a varsity lacrosse player was also positive. Gilloom's girls lacrosse teams has historically been very successful, including during my four years on the team. Our Booster Club fundraised tirelessly to afford us the opportunity to rent turf field time for practices and even games. Had it not been for the Booster Club, our success rate would have been questionable. Many years, we could not set foot on our home grass field until after our first game. This would have meant practices either in a gymnasium or parking lot. Thank goodness we had the turf field rentals because either myself or a teammate could have easily been injured playing in a small gym or worse, in a parking lot. While I am grateful for the Booster Club's efforts and turf field rentals, it also had its drawbacks. A traditional two-hour practice was easily extended to three to four hours due to transportation to and from the field. The extended time for practices led to less time for dinner, family interaction, and homework. Field hockey is a sport meant to be played on a smooth surface. While the maintenance crews do their best to make our grass fields playable, it could just, it just could not compare to a turf field. Playing field hockey on a grass field can lead to more lofted balls in dangerous situations. Numerous opponents in suburban council had the advantage of both practicing and playing games on their home turf field. From time to time, we had the chance to practice on a turf field, but not enough time to prepare us for competition against teams with a turf field at their disposal. During my four years as a varsity field hockey athlete, we had strong teams with a lot of talent. We did our best, but had sparse success. I can only imagine how far we could have gone with a home turf field. I heard that since my graduation, the field hockey team had the chance to rent a turf field for nearly the entire season, and they experienced great success. I'm thrilled that the Gilloom School District is discussing the addition of a turf field at GHS. A school of our size and caliber without a turf field is a thing of the past. A home turf field is not a luxury item, it is a need. Why must the student athletes of Gilloom participate with subpar facilities? They deserve more. Sincerely, Courtney Rafferty. Public comment number nine. To the Gilloom School Board's, um, Gilloom School District's Board of Education. We write you, we write to you in regards to acquiring a turf athletic field at Gilloom High School. Investing in a turf field would have many benefits for the whole Gilloom School community, from the maintenance crews to the student athletes who would both practice and represent their school on that turf field. Our student athletes are representatives of our school district's talents and, and spirit, and providing them with a field surface to excel on is respectfully overdue. A turf field would reduce lawn maintenance and increase safety for our student athletes, who would now be able to play safely in weather conditions that would normally threaten scheduled practices and games. Turf fields don't flood like grass fields and provide a more stable surface. An added bonus would be less canceling, rescheduling of games. A turf field would also allow Gilloom teams to remain competitive. The same sport played on grass is very different from play on turf. Most schools, most area schools have now, now have turf fields which provide their athletes an advantage over our athletes who are unable to access practices on a turf surface. Our field hockey has seen firsthand the disadvantages of not having access to turf. Our oldest daughter joined the program in 8th grade and began playing on grass. It was evident even to us as newbies that when our team went up against schools on their turf fields that were not prepared to truly, we were not prepared to truly compete. Our field hockey program led by Coach Sykes then made turf access a priority. Her program began fundraising so Gilloom's team would not have that disadvantage. The field hockey team has paid approximately 12,000 a year these past couple of years through fundraisers, just to have our girls take the field on the level playing field. That is all anyone wants for their kids. This takes a lot of work and coordination from the coaches, players, and families. The team has figured out how to get all players safely to and from AFROMs for soc, uh, sorry, for practices and games, about 15 minutes from school. Traveling to practice takes precious time away from these athletes who balance school extracurricular activities and their sport. Before COVID hit, delivering an alternative sports season, this hard-working team brought home the Section Two championships. I'm sure if you asked any field hockey enthusiast, they would tell you that having a turf access played a significant part in their ability to bring home that honor. Can you just imagine what a dedicated and hard-working team like this could achieve together if that fundraising effort could instead uh, be placed into learning and excelling and playing at the game, and playing the game? Having a home turf field would lessen that stress of having to fundraise just to play competitively. Just as important, it would be, it would build a stronger school spirit amongst players and their peers who could catch a game while waiting for a ride home or spark a new interest in a sport they otherwise would not be able to see in action. As a parent of five athletes in the Gil, in the district, we strongly urge the school board to approve a turf field to give all Gilloom athletes the ability to compete on level with their competitors. The sooner the process is started, the sooner the benefits for the community will be seen for, from the groundskeepers to the athletes to their peers who can easily watch and support their friends on the field at their Gilloom home. These athletes and coaches have the determination, perseverance, and grit needed to excel. Now let's give them a true home-field advantage. Sincerely, David, Kim, Chelsea, Carly, Sarah, Rachel, and Henry King. Public comment number 10. And mine is not opening. Do one of you mind reading public comment number 10? Like, try to get the next one?
My 10 isn't opening either, Seema.
Okay. Well, I can go back, I can go to 11 and.
I can do it.
Oh, thank you, Blanca.
My name is Melissa Mooney. Does that sound right? Dear Board of Education Members, my name is Melissa Mooney, and I am writing this letter in support of Gilloom Central School District getting a turf field. I am currently a longtime resident of Gilloom Central School District and have two children who are proud graduates of the district. Both of our children excelled academically and through sports within the district. Our daughter Caitlin was an excellent student on and off the field and played three sports throughout her time in the district. Caitlin especially loved being a part of the Gilloom field hockey, lacrosse, and cross-country ski teams. While she is currently playing Division One field hockey at Hofstra College, this would have not been possible if she did not play on turf in high school. While most neighboring school districts have turf, we struggled because we did not, sorry, we struggled because we did not when she started sports at Gilloom. We were often fundraising to pay for turf time for both lacrosse and field hockey. We were at a huge disadvantage playing against schools who have had turf. We simply could not compete at the same level as other teams for this reason. Thankfully, during Caitlin's time at Gilloom, Coach Sykes joined the district. She realized the need for turf over grass. She knew in order to be competitive, we needed turf for practice and games. I will never forget losing to Shenandoah Hola in 21-2-0 before we had turf. The year my daughter graduated, we beat Shenandoah Hola in overtime to win the sectional title. This would not have been possible if we had not played on turf. The game is fast and the girls don't play on turf, simply don't have the same level of skills to compete. Additionally, the consistent playing surface cut down on the many injuries that came with changing from grass to turf between both lacrosse and field hockey. Caitlin many times turned to her ankles on our grass field, which was also often not cut short enough to play the game. I think it is important for Gilloom athletes to be able to compete at the same level as other districts. I feel very strongly, we are at a huge disadvantage not having it. It is far overdue when you look around at other districts. Thank you for your time and consideration for getting turf for our athletes to compete at the same level as other schools. Sincerely, Melissa Mooney.
Thank you, Blanca. Okay, public comment number 11. It's from Phil and Jen Sykes. Dear Gilloom Board of Education, thank you for taking the time to read this letter at the May 25th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting. My name is Jennifer Sykes, and along with my husband Phil Sykes, we write this letter to express our support as new community members for a multi-sport turf field to be installed at Gilloom High School. Jen is a member of the Physical Education Department at Gilloom and the head varsity field hockey coach, and Phil is entering his 18th season as a head field hockey coach at the University of Albany. We decided to move to Gilloom so we could be a part of what we have discovered as a caring community who looks after each other and the well-being of the community. Being someone who has taught in a district with a multi-sport turf field prior to my arrival as an educator and coach at Gilloom in 2017, I wanted to share some insight on why this would be more than just a field. The number one positive aspect of a turf field in my experience was as a physical educator. It becomes a huge outdoor teaching station. Outdoor units can be extended by sometimes months, which would have been very beneficial this year during the pandemic. Instead of having to adjust for safety reasons for early morning classes due to wet field conditions, the turf provides consistency through all classes, no matter what time of day. Lines on the turf field can be easily coned off for safety, providing a buffer zone for activities that are easy for students to follow, uh, to maintain a safe environment. The second positive aspect of a multi-sport field is how it can improve the quality of life for PE students, PE teachers, student athletes, coaches, families, parents, siblings, members of our grounds and maintenance staff, and easing the burden placed on our athletic department to have to constantly reschedule games. We often see home athletic contests scheduled for 4:15 PM moved to a school with a turf at the last minute due to wet field conditions at Gilloom. This means a lot of scrambling for our families and uncertainty in their daily schedules as they work around sometimes multiple children's schedules. It also means loss of a home game in which friends and families can attend, friends and family members can attend with ease compared to having to now travel to the opponent's turf field, sometimes for much later in the day game times. Getting games started on time is such a gift for coaches and athletes who have already put in a full school and workday and have family commitments following the extension of their workday with athletics. The third positive aspect of a multi-sports field is that it's very, it is a very personal one to me, has to do with what I witnessed prior to my arrival, arrival at Gilloom. It was actually one of the main factors that motivated me to pursue both a teaching and coaching position at Gilloom. In the fall of 2016, I was coaching modified field hockey and teaching at a suburban council school that has a turf field and is now getting a second turf field for their middle school. I witnessed that Gilloom field hockey team lose on a turf surface 21-0 due to the speed of a game. They clearly were not used to playing on an even surface that was both safe and allowed for the ball to travel flat at a higher speed. It wasn't for lack of grit or determination, it was due to lack of facility. Nine of those girls were freshmen and experienced that loss. Were given the opportunity to train and play in a rented field at AFROMs sports for the next three seasons from 2017 to 2019. Their senior year, they won the Section Two title and got to experience a run deep into the state tournament. This included winning against the team that had, that had beaten them by the largest margin I've ever heard in a sport that I've coached now for 25 years. Many of those players will forever have such fond memories of their high school experience. The lessons learned from their incredible turn, turnaround can, uh, sorry, turnaround due to being able to practice and play in an even turf-playing field are lessons they can carry forward in their lives. A turf field, a turf sounds just like a field, but it's so much more. Our inaugural Girls' Day and Sports, Sports Day in 2019 featured every coach of the girls' sports at Gilloom and over 150 girls from our district in grades K through 5. Imagine the pride they could feel if they were able to add an Olympic-style opening ceremonies and allow these kids to march onto a facility that we can call our own in front of their families and friends. These are the types of community events I want to help continue to run and be a part of. After so many months having, uh, having to be a part, the idea of bringing members of our community back to Gilloom High School and being proud of what could be a consistent and up-to-date facility gives the Sykes family great joy. We are one of the last school districts that have not installed a multi-surface field that can be used for so much more than just athletics. With the unpredictable weather we experience in the Northeast, the idea of making the daily lives for our families more predictable improves both academic performance and time for family. We are excited to think of what could be for our school community with the upgrades in indoor facilities. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Phil and Jen Sykes. Public comment number 12. Good evening. I am very encouraged by the approval of this 1.0 DEI position. and what will it and what will it mean for the progress towards diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. I have some thoughts and suggestions based on the job posting as it currently reads. There are other districts who have used the same language along along the same lines of what I'm I am about to suggest to attract a diverse pool of candidates, sorry. I think it would behoove us to do the same considering the conversations that we have had and especially after seeing the data shared by Dr. Wiles compared to comparing student and staff demographics. I would like to see language in the job posting to address the disparities between races that we see in our staff and admin. In this position, I see this position in part as an opportunity to take a considerably impactful step towards increasing staff diversity. I would like to see language such as if you meet some of the qualifications above, we encourage you to reach out for more information. We know that historically marginalized groups, including people of color, women, people from working-class backgrounds, and people who identify as LGBTQ are less likely to apply unless and until they meet every job, every requirement for a job. Therefore, we strongly encourage applications from people with these identities and who are members of other marginalized communities. Or quote firsthand experience with systemic barriers that perpetuate inequitable practices. This includes the ability to assist in disrupting systems and practices that perpetuate systemic racism. The person in this role will inform larger DEI strategies and programs by leveraging district-specific and community-wide culture, knowledge, relationships, and practices. We strongly encourage applications from people of color or from communities that are historically underrepresented in suburban school systems. The language that I have given as an example is of what our job posting could include is a combination of language from posting of other districts as well as the advice of an accomplished professional in the DEI arena who has held the exact same position that we are hiring for in more than one district, including one of our own neighboring suburban districts. I plan to share their contact information and resume with the board and have permission to do so in the hopes that they can provide insight and advice as we move through the hiring process. Thank you for hearing my ideas and being transparent in this process by sharing the draft description. Nidra Irway, E&amp;L teacher at FMS and Equity and Diversity Committee Co-Chair. Public comment number 13. As we prepare to hire our district's inaugural Equity Coordinator, I would like to make some suggestions regarding the job posting and interview process. Many of these suggestions emerged from a discussion that I and several other members of the Equity and Diversity Subcommittee had with an Equity Coordinator who has worked in public schools in the Capital District and the Northeast. The person who fills this new role will have a lot of opportunity and a lot of challenges. Transparency about that could help us avoid a situation in which we attract someone but then cannot retain them. I would suggest language describing our district's current situation like, quote, "Earlier in the school year, the Board of Education established a standing Equity and Diversity Subcommittee. The successful candidate will work closely with this committee to improve equity in a variety of ways." Oh, sorry, sorry, variety of areas, including curriculum, hiring, and student life. 27% of our district's students today are Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, Asian, Native Hawaiian, or other Pacific Islander, or multiracial. The number of people of color on our faculty and staff lagged far behind that. Some groundwork for greater equity has been laid by faculty and administrative initiatives in the various buildings and by student groups, including the Anti-Racism Committee, the Black Student Union, and the Gay-Straight Alliance. Much work remains to be done and the successful candidate will play a crucial role in shaping the district's future. I would like to see the district encourage people of color to apply for this post with language like, quote, "We strongly encourage individuals from historically disenfranchised groups to apply." This is a new area for everyone. There are no college departments that turn out public school equity coordinators. In addition to be to listing qualifications, I think we should also list skills that the coordinator will need, like these that I borrowed from an existing job posting in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Strong interpersonal skills and ability to build coalitions and collaborative working relationships with a broad range of diverse individuals and groups. Demonstrated cultural awareness, agility, and ability to trust and to build trust and credibility, navigate a complex political and ideological landscape. Excellent command of current diversity, equity, and inclusion concepts and issues in public schools or institutions. Knowledge of laws, regulations, and guidelines related to diversity, inclusion, and non-discrimination in schools, including those mentioned. An ability to articulate the importance of inclusion and diversity to the broader Gilderlin community. Elizabeth Floyd Mayer. And so I think we have a few more public comments for number two. Is that correct, Dr. Wiles? Okay. All right, so just in quick response in reference to the public comments, the Equity and Diversity Coordinator position will be discussed later in this meeting's agenda, later on in the meeting under Superintendent Information. In the turf field, I know a lot of people wrote about that. I don't know Maria or Neil, if you could just give like a brief update that that is in in discussion in the the next capital project.
We are actively seeking members from the community to serve on a sort of a, actually two facilities committees to help provide guidance on a potential for an upcoming capital project that would include some items that were eliminated from our current capital project when it didn't pass, but also look at the addition of a turf field. So those meetings will happen in June, so anyone watching with interest in serving. I'm not sure if we've missed the deadline, but I think we're still looking for people to serve. Neil, did I get all that correct or close enough?
You have it absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Okay, and so, yep, the other ones we'll get to later down under Superintendent Info. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which are the consent items. This includes the minutes of the May 3rd and May 4th meetings, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials. Can I have a motion to approve? Blanca, second bar. Any changes, questions? Barb?
It may have been corrected. I haven't checked the website, but the last statement that Kelly made was about microaggressions, not mackerel aggressions. And I think Linda may have already fixed that.
Thank you. Any other changes or questions? Okay, all in favor? Passes 7-0. Next, we'll go on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I'm very pleased to extend congratulations to GHS student Nakia Isabella Rios, who recently won the Best Actress Award at the Proctor's High School Musical Theater. Nakia will be competing in the National Award Show called the Jimmy Awards in June. And this is, of course, a tremendous accomplishment. And I've included the link to the Times Union story, and we certainly wish her well in the awards. And my next item, I also want to congratulate Gilderlin's Deb O'Brien, who's our tennis coach and a PE teacher. She was recently named the 2019 National Federation of State High School Association's Northeast Section Girls Tennis Coach of the Year. The Northeast section includes Connecticut, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, Rhode Island, and Vermont. Honorees were selected based upon the performance of the 2019-20 school year, lifetime community involvement, school involvement, and philosophy of coaching. Coach O'Brien has flourished as the tennis coach at Gilderlin. She has coached at least two seasons. Girls varsity tennis and boys JV tennis in every year that she has been at Gilderlin. She has positively influenced thousands of students and student athletes during her career. Under her leadership, Gilderlin's girls' tennis have won have won several suburban council championships and Section Two championship as well. She has earned Section Two Coach of the Year twice and currently serves as the Section Two Chairperson for girls' tennis. So congratulations to Coach O'Brien. Very well deserved.
Thank you, Dr. Singleton. Congratulations to student and the coach. And we'll move on to the next item, Superintendent Information. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I want to begin with a hearty thank you to our community for coming out in support of our budget for the 2021-2022 school year. It was approved by nearly 70% of the voters who participated, and they also approved our bus proposition. It makes a huge difference to have our community support, so I just want to be sure to thank everyone who came out to vote. And I also want to congratulate newly elected members to the Board of Education. We have incumbents Blanca Gonzalez Parker and Seema Rivera, and we'll also be welcoming newcomer Nathan Suboran. I also need to recognize Neil Sanders and Linda Livingston, who do a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to make the budget vote and election look flawlessly simple and easy to do, but it is a tremendous amount of work, particularly in a pandemic. So thanks to both of you for your leadership in that area. And then I want to also recognize our BOSI's Capital Region Communication Service, who have assisted us for many years. And over the recent months, we've had kind of a changing list of people helping us, so it's been really quite a challenge to get our message out there, but clearly it worked, and so we're very thankful. And my next item is the reason why we were a little bit late getting our board meeting started this evening. Just prior to the board meeting, we had the pleasure of recognizing in-person 27 staff members who received tenure. We had a small reception and an in-person recognition ceremony in the high school auditorium. It was terrific to see real people in actual seats and to be able to recognize this important milestone in their career. So my congratulations to each and every one of our new tenurees. And then an ever-changing topic will be an update on our graduations and moving up ceremonies. I am hopeful this will be the end of any changes. But I did want to point out that our graduation ceremony has been changed. For anyone who didn't see the message that came out from Mr. Piscatelli last Friday, but the class of 2021 graduation ceremony will now be held at the Times Union Center at noon on Friday, June 25. We moved for several reasons. But the main reason was that the capacity increased there, and so we can actually welcome more family members for each of our graduates. It is up to 2,000 individuals who can attend, not counting our graduates. And that was just a strong pull for us to not have to worry about the weather and also have so much, so many people be able to join in that momentous event. I also have some updates on our moving up ceremonies. Perhaps the most awaited update is with our Farnsworth eighth grade moving up ceremony. We will be welcoming families to attend the moving up ceremonies for our eighth graders. In order to maintain the appropriate capacity limits, though, we'll actually be having three separate ceremonies. They will be held in person at Gilderlin High School in the football stadium. And they will be held by house, starting at 11, will be the first. Then 1 PM and 3 PM, and each eighth grade student will get three tickets for family members to attend. And I understand the middle school will be sending out communication to eighth grade parents tomorrow morning, pending feedback from all of you on this changed plan. And then the five elementary buildings all have a variation on a theme of how they'll be celebrating the fifth grade moving up. But they will all be in person. Pine Bush will have three separate ceremonies at Farnsworth Middle School in the cafeteria on Friday, June 25. And they will recognize both remote and in-person students, and that'll take place at 8:15, 9:15, and 10:15. Westmere will have their ceremony on Tuesday, June 22 at 8:30 AM, and this is for the BOSI students will have their moving up day at Westmere Elementary. And then three more separate ceremonies for remote and in-person students will be held at Farnsworth Middle School in the cafeteria on Thursday, June 24. And they will take place at 8:15, 9:30, and 10:30. Lynnwood Elementary School will host two ceremonies in the cafeteria on Thursday, June 24, and they'll take place at 12 PM and 1:30 PM. Altimat will host its ceremony on June 22. It'll be at 9 AM at Bosenkill Park. And last but not least, Gilderlin Elementary School will hold two ceremonies at GES on Wednesday, June 23. They'll take place at 10 AM and 1:00 outside if the weather allows and inside if it does not. And each of those buildings will be communicating directly with families with more details about each of the events. Questions, comments, thoughts on those?
I just had a comment that I just wanted to thank the administration, especially to Mr. Laster for making the eighth grade ceremony to allow them to have parents. I know that there was, it was a big lift to ask, and there was a lot of background information happening with Regents exams and the high school practice graduation. So I just want to thank Mr. Laster for doing that.
I'm sure he will appreciate that, and I know he's working with his team to pull it all together. So should be a lovely day and a wonderful event, events. And speaking of wonderful events, I have some update on award ceremonies. And this is as of now, some of these things are still getting refined. But I did want to point out that National Junior Honor Society, this award ceremony will take place Tuesday, June 15. It is a completely virtual and will be launched at 6:30 PM. The President's Awards, these are awards typically given to eighth grade students. They'll be given out during the eighth grade moving up ceremony. Junior and senior awards at the high school, this award ceremony will take take place virtually, and it's currently scheduled for Wednesday, June 2. Board of Education Awards for grades 11 and 12, the Board of Ed Awards will be listed in the virtual program on the junior senior award ceremony. And for eighth grade Board of Ed Award winners, they'll be announced and distributed during their moving up ceremony. And all other recipients, those are our sixth and seventh and ninth and 10th graders, where we'll be mailing home certificates for everybody, and we're just looking for the best way to do those announcements. So stay tuned on that. Last but not least, the senior athletic awards, there'll be a virtual award ceremony during the week of June 21. It's really late because the spring season is going right till the very end of the school year. And we'll be sharing more information when that becomes available. So a lot of things going on. My next item, I know we've got quite a bit of public comment on this. I just wanted to point out, this is the job description. It's not necessarily the job posting for the position. So this was the first attempt to capture kind of the big picture of the expectations for this new role. So I, when I met with Seema and Gloria Friday to review the agenda, we thought it would be very helpful to bring it to the board at this portion of the agenda to get some additional feedback. And we've also gotten some nice feedback from some community members who have written in. So I will open it to thoughts, comments, questions on that draft.
I just have a couple of comments. I think you all saw that I had some track changes that I sent. And Nidra Irway's comments that she sent, and I think she wrote in public comment too. In the beginning, I really think the suggestions she made were good. So I think maybe we should consider those to sound more welcoming. And then there were just two other things that stood out to me. Number, number six, like the way number sixes were in just sounds like you have to find a miracle worker, and it just seems like impossible. Like they're going to do everything in the school district, and then it says a wide variety of student wrapper. It just seems so big that to me that would seem daunting if I was looking at a job position. And then the last part was under objectives at the bottom to not use superior, to maybe describe it a different way. That just comes off, I don't know, comes off kind of cold. Oh, Rebecca, sorry. Do you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to say I agree that something I hadn't considered before the public comment, which I'm of course trying to find now and I can't, but I think it was the second to last public comment about appealing to. appealing to people from disadvantaged backgrounds, that they may be hesitant to apply unless we specifically spell out that we're seeking those applications. I thought that was a great idea.
Thanks, oh, Blanca, sorry.
I liked specifically Nedra's second recommendation. First or firsthand experience with systemic barriers that perpetuate inequitable practices. I think that's, I'm familiar with nursing, you know, nursing job descriptions and such, and sometimes in lieu of a degree, for example, they'll qualify that firsthand experience. So I see it as something similar, and I think it would be beneficial.
Barbara?
Well, I also had a question on that number six. Why would that individual be concerned with central registration, student transfer requests? I couldn't understand that. Maybe Marie can explain that.
Well, I think those are decision points or transition points within the district, and I don't know that this individual would do that work per se, because we have a central registrar, but they might be mindful of the work to make sure that it is happening in a equitable manner. So it's more of an awareness, because those are, those are, those are kind of gatekeeping things.
I mean, student transfer requests? This is a student that's going to another district, right?
I read it as requests to move from one building to another, which we do get.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. The other question I had was in the qualifications. This is a position that probably will cost the district about one hundred and fifty thousand, but it doesn't require a master's degree. It would seem to me that this high level of position would at least require a master's degree or a administrative certificate. Why was that just left as a possibility?
I think it broadens the pool. I mean, the starting salary will, will be probably in the high eighties, low nineties. We, so I think we tried to walk a line there to open the door to qualifications for diverse and varied experiences, but also signaled that we do appreciate the extra level of schooling and/or certification.
Okay, number 10, organizes coordination and assists in program reviews, audits, and surveys. Hiring, I mean, we have a Director of Human Resources. Why would this individual be involved directly with hiring?
Well, I think the part about recruiting and building pipelines to expand where we're drawing candidates from, I don't think they would be doing the hiring. I think they would be assisting with that part. And Reagan, I don't know if you want to jump in there.
No, that was, that was perfect, you know, to be involved in the conversations when we're recruiting and, and to serve on committees when available.
I think Barbara brought up a good point. Could you just explain what an administrative certificate is for those of us that don't know?
Sure. So in order to be an administrator, considered an administrator within the state of New York, you have to have one of a handful of certificates, just like, it's like a teaching certificate only for an administrative level. And they can be building level certificates, district level certificates, business administrator certificates. It signifies a level of coursework and also the participation in an internship and passing several exams.
Is that something that we should consider making a requirement? I mean, it really sounds like they're going to be in a very high-demand position that is really like an administrative position. Is that something that we should make a requirement?
It will narrow the pool. That's really the only reason to keep the door kind of open there. Barbara?
But isn't this an administrative position? We listed it as such, so wouldn't that individual have to have a certificate, an administrative certificate? I was puzzled by that, because this isn't just a, you know, a regular teacher position. This is an administrative position.
Well, yes and no. It could be. This individual won't be supervising anyone, which is one of the reasons why you are required to have an administrative certificate. Again, I think we're trying to have a a wide casting net, and an administrative certification in education is not necessarily that. So I think we look for expertise and skill sets. I don't know that you have to have a certification in order to have that expertise and skill set.
But you said this person would be part of your administrative team. And I'm, well, on your team.
I consider Cliff Noonie and Danielle Poirier members of our leadership team. They're not administratively certified. However, they are definitely district leaders.
Yeah, okay.
Seema, and then Ben.
I just wanted to say that I, I think leaving it open is going to be an advantage, that there's already a small pool of people that we're going to be looking for. And then, you know, the types of questions being asked already seems unwelcoming, and if, you know, someone was going to be looking to work here, they would just have to watch, you know, a few board meetings to realize, you know, what they're coming into. So I think, you know, I think we need to think about that. If we wanted to set this person up for success, some of these, the points that people are making and questions, and I understand that asking about the administrative piece is a reasonable question, but this is also an inaugural position. Has nobody ever been in this position before at Gilderland, and it's brand new. I also think that, yes, it would be nice to have, you know, a master's degree, et cetera, but I think we all know, just because someone has a degree, doesn't make them a professional and good at their job.
Ben?
I agree with the very first thing that Seema said and the very last thing that Seema said. I think that we should leave it open to more possibility. You know, I think that this is an opportunity to bring in a different voice who's going to look at things differently, and I almost want to take away the requirement that they have five years of teaching experience, because you know, someone baked into the system can't always change.
Ben, that's why the OR-related field is there to give some, some level of flexibility. Barbara?
My question. I'm unfamiliar with what ethical studies are. I haven't heard of a major in ethical studies. Is that like philosophy or what are ethical studies that are listed as one of the possibilities?
I'm sure there are programs out there that focus on ethics, so I think it's not necessarily a major, but if there were someone with a background where they looked at those kinds of issues, it doesn't need to be there exactly.
Barbara, I work, there's a biomedical ethics program, so people are getting, I don't know if it's certification or degree, but that's their whole program.
Well, I have taken a lot of notes, and Seema, I have your comments, and I've got Nidra's and Elizabeth Floyd Mayer's. Why don't I take another stab at all of this and send it back?
I think Blanca, do you have your hand raised or is that from?
Oh, I'm sorry, Blanca.
It's fine. I was just going to say that I agree with Seema and Ben, and that I would be opposed to making the pool smaller, and in general, I'm opposed to valuing people strictly on what degree they have.
So is everyone okay with my plan to massage this based on the various feedback and try to get it back out soon? We are hopeful to post this soon, and the posting will probably be, I'll work with Reagan on the posting, not quite as much on the specific responsibilities and more on the, kind of the philosophical ideas that we heard in some of our public comments too. So we can work on both of those and get your feedback.
Thank you.
And I think that's it for my report.
I'm just checking, Dr. Wells, did you want to mention the, in the, in the consent agenda, the new transportation?
I did. Thank you so much. When the board voted on the personnel agenda as part of the consent agenda, we now have a new Director of Transportation, and his name is Inho Su, and he comes to us from the Albany City Schools. And prior to that, as the Director of Transportation, prior to that, he was the Director of Transportation in Berlin. And before that, he was at North Colony. So he is energetic and enthusiastic and looking forward to getting a start here in Gilderland, and we're very happy to have him.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wells. Next, we have Board President information. I have two items. The first are a set of policies, A through F. Does anyone on the Policy Committee want to draw our attention to any of those? Specifically, I saw some that looked like there was just some word smithing. And I guess I had one question. I don't know if you want to talk about it now with the homework piece. I just didn't know if you got, if you did homework on that homework piece, like, did you ask, get feedback from teachers or anybody like other administrators about that?
We were definitely always get feedback, you know, from the stakeholders. And if you notice, the major change is sort of a reduction in the expected homework time. And this was in response to particularly Blanca wanting to have no homework, whatever. And we figure we'll take baby steps, because there are districts that have actually eliminated most homework. But we're trying to make it possible that the homework that is given out to students is productive. It's not just busy work that, you know, it might involve project work over a period of time or whatever, but not simply homework, you know, for homework sake. We also really want the homework to have feedback. And if you, if a child does some homework, then the following day or within a day or so, we want them to have feedback on that particular event that, you know, that they proceeded with. So as I said, not major changes, but sort of little baby steps towards, you know, perhaps cutting the time even further maybe in the future.
Rebecca?
I think the reduction in homework is fantastic. I'm just curious how it's enforced. So in the high school, kids have multiple different classes, multiple different teachers. If the goal is two hours cumulative maximum per night, how can you possibly enforce that?
I think we talked about in committee, this really is going to mean some work with our instructional administrators who work within their departments. But I don't know that we'll ever be able to get it perfect, you know, for, but I do think to raise awareness about it, you know, people tend to do a lot of assignments that end like right at the end of the quarter or the five-week part, and maybe to build some awareness across, across the departments that let's not have everything do like all at once at the end of a semester. But I do think it's going to be a work in progress to enforce that. It's easier at the middle school when, when they work in teams. So they know, you know, obviously they're planning together, and at the elementary level, it's also much more doable, but you're right, Rebecca, that'll be the heavy lift on that.
Thank you.
Blanca?
Just in response to your question about stakeholders, Seema, Marie was pretty vehement about us not stepping on the teachers' toes in terms of, you know, what did you call it, Marie? Something freedom?
Oh, academic freedom.
Academic freedom. So we did try to respect that and take that into account with the policy.
Thank you. Any other things that you want, the Policy Committee that you want us to look at in particular or?
No, I think the other things are pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you. And so we'll move on, unless people have questions, we'll move on to letter B. These are the proposed Board of Education meeting dates for next year. So I think next meeting, they'll be voted on. This is just up for information. Does anyone have any feedback? All right, thank you. So we'll move on to action items. First is school business management. I'll turn it to Neil.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First item in this evening is the approval of the resolution and declaration showing the tabulation of votes cast at the annual budget vote and election meeting. And just as a reminder, the budget passed, the 1,754 residents voting yes, 834 voting no. On the bus purchase, 1,803 residents voted yes, 784 voted no. In terms of the Board of Education candidates, Seema Rivera received 1,715 votes. Blanca Gonzalez Parker received 1,488 votes. Nathan Suboran received 1,407 votes. Luciano Alonzi received 1,328 votes.
Okay, the motion to approve the resolution and tabulation of votes, Ben, second, Judy. Any questions or comments? I'll just throw it out there since he'll be on the board at Sabrin. I know that everyone's saying it wrong. Nathan Sabrin, but any other questions or comments? Are all in favor? He passes seven zero.
Next item is the approval of a bond resolution authorizing the purchase of various school buses and vehicles. And that resolution is before you. The total cost is $1,033,200. And for the buses, which is the majority of that cost, we do receive stated in about half the cost for the buses. And this does require a roll call vote as well.
Neil, so Linda, you'll do the roll call of those?
Yeah, do I do a motion first or?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the, the, let's see, what is the bus? The bond resolution for the school buses? Blanca, second, Judy?
Ready?
Any questions? No, okay, go ahead, Linda, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Alonzi?
Yes.
Dr. Butterfield? Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mr. Goze?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez Parker?
Yes.
This is, oh, this person, Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes seven zero. Next, oh, sorry, this is Neil.
Thanks. Next, we have a recommendation to approve the tax surstrary settlement with Oxford Heights LLC. And this is an agreement between the Oxford Heights, the town, and the school district.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution, Barb? A second, Julie, or sorry, Judy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes seven-zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the consulting agreement with Needham Risk Management Resources Group LLC for the upcoming school year in connection with Health, Safety and Risk Management Services.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement with Needham Risk Management? Judy, second, Rebecca. Any questions? All in favor? Passes seven-zero.
Next is a resolution to approve change orders in the capital project for Bonkoff General Contractors. We have one at the high school or both at the high school, one for the replacement of a collapsed stormpipe and the other for a window replacement in two classrooms.
Can I have a motion to approve the change orders? Ben, second, Blanca? Any questions? All in favor? Passes seven-zero.
Okay, thank you. Next is a recommendation to approve the agreement with Sienna College to make available college and the high school courses to students for college credit during the 2021-22 school year.
Can I have a motion to approve the Sienna College and the High School Agreement? Blanca, second. Barb? Any questions? All in favor? Oh, Barb, did you have a question? Sorry.
It said it was $250 for the, I think it's for the semester for the four credits. Is Damian know that or not?
I don't know for sure, but I can certainly check into that.
It's a very good deal if that's the case.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Passes seven-zero.
Next is a recommendation to approve the formation of the Focus Staff Scholarship Award. The scholarship will recognize graduating senior for their sustained growth during their tenure in the Focus Program.
Can I have a motion to approve the Focus Staff Scholarship? Barb, second, Rebecca? Any questions? All in favor? Blanca, did you vote? Sorry, passes seven-zero.
And next is a recommendation for the formation of the Gabriella Casado Scholarship Award. The student selected to receive this award demonstrates a love of art through their imagination and creativity and plans to pursue their passion for art after graduation.
Can I have a motion to approve the Gabriella Casado Scholarship Award? Barb, I'm sorry, Blanca, second. Barb? Any questions? All in favor? Passes seven-zero.
Next is a resolution to approve budgetary transfers totaling $111,276 as noted.
Can I have a motion to approve the fund transfers? Judy? Second Rebecca? Any questions? All in favor? Motion passes seven-zero.
Then finally, this evening, we have several donations that we've received. The first was a monetary donation from Special Olympics New York to help support Unified Bowling. Our second is a clarinet, three student guitars and a student ukulele from Barbara Dan Soro. The third is a bell cap from Paul Rimmer. And finally, a trumpet, digital camera, two film cameras and one zoom lens from Andrew Linehan.
Can I have a motion to approve the donations? Judy, second Rebecca. Any questions or comments? Thank you for all the donations. Appreciate it. All in favor? Passes seven-zero. Thank you, Neil. Next, we'll move on to Superintendent Action. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I just have one item this evening and this is a memorandum of agreement seeking approval from the board to authorize me to execute a proposed MOA with the Gilderland Teachers Association along with Lenore Aldi Snow, Richard LaSalle and Mary Ann Libertucci. And this is regarding the change in retirement date to May 15th for this year only.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOA? Blanca, second Rebecca. Any questions? All in favor? The pass is seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we'll move on to Board Committee Reports. Start with Audit. Ben?
Audit Committee met on May 12th to review the timeline for our district audit for 2020, the 2020-2021 school year. And we have no further meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Ben. Business practices?
We have not met and do not have a meeting scheduled.
Thank you. And communication?
We have not met since the last meeting and as far as I know, I don't think we have anything scheduled.
Policy?
We met last week and you have the fruits of our labors and we're meeting again on Thursday.
Thank you, Barb. And equity and diversity. I know Kelly's not here, but I know there's a meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. So, we'll move on to board issues, ideas and, oh, I'm sorry, no, we have public comment first. So, there's two public comments here and then I think there's two more in email. So, I will go ahead and read these public comments. So, public comment number one. Dear editor, in the article GCSD Proposes 105 Million Budget Includes Diversity Administrator in the April 22nd, 2021 edition of the newspaper, I have concerns and questions about the diversity administrator. So, this public comment is also directed at the GCSD's Board for clarification. The district proposes to allocate 113,800 salary and benefits for a position to develop policies to advance diversity, equity, inclusion and to implement such policies. Apparently, this is to fulfill an expectation of the Board of Regents. So, I ask, what will be the job duties and scope of services for this position? What will be the measures that will be used to know when or how much diversity or inclusion or equity is or are achieved? It seems that this position may continue as an expense year after year. Is this the plan? In the natural order of living beings, animal or human, diversity is challenged by the observable fact that birds of a feather flock together, fish swim in schools, cattle in herds, turkeys in herds, whales in pods and, ad infinitum. So, it seems that forced diversity and maybe inclusion will be resisted by the students because it is not their natural inclination. So, how will policies be implemented? Furthermore, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 forbids discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex or national origin in hiring, promoting and firing. Doesn't this law take precedence over the Regents' expectations, at least as far as staffing goes? This year of the pandemic has been difficult for everyone, including teachers and most profoundly on our young students. After all, one is only young once. So, class time missed or denied is gone forever. Yet, the district can apply for all or part 2.8 million from the American Rescue Plan for the next two summers. Should not summer school be part of the budget to help our students catch up what they missed? And in 2018 ranking of schools worldwide, China is number one for reading, math and science. Hong Kong is next. In Finland, the United States are way down at 26th. Source ID population reviews. We must do better. My final comment is, over the years, public schools have taken on many responsibilities that, once upon a time, were those of parents. Things like breakfast, lunch, summer feeding, perhaps, possibly pre-kindergarten and importantly, teaching the social graces of please, thank you and respect for the property of others. It seems right that teachers should teach and not need to act as surrogate parents or disciplinarians. We have had PTAs, parent-teacher conferences, but has GCSD done much or can it do anything to help or maybe push parents of difficult children to do better at their most important task of being good parents? Sincerely, Harry Carlson. Public comment number two. Hello, I wanted to let the board know that the beginning in September of 2018, my child was discouraged from choosing college track courses that would allow him to pursue an advanced Regents' diploma when picking his advanced math and science classes as a transfer student to GHS in ninth grade. I spoke with his teachers, guidance counselor, assistant principal and vice principal each year many times over the past three years about this issue. I learned this year after discussions with parents that white children who transferred in with the same or lower performance did not face the resistance to advanced placement that my gifted child did. This year, I spoke to Barbara Frederigo and Ben Goze several times about the issue and they have yet to resolve this for my child. Here is an issue about systemic racism at GHS and months later, neither of you have addressed it. Please come up with a plan to rectify the harm that has been done to my child's academic career. I also want to say, if I think you are prejudiced or racist, it's based on fact. I have called several comments by board members racist with supporting facts. Facts are not assumptions. A reasonable person would find these facts as an example of racism or bias. Me, as a black mother, felt disrespected on the basis of my race and I spoke out about it and created an opportunity for understanding if you chose. Recently, retired New York State Trooper engaged in a discussion with me, saying that blacks had no right to complain about the killings of unarmed black people by the police, as he stated, "We blacks killed each other more than the police did." His opinion is based on false information and surmises that blacks are inherently violent, more violent than other races, which is not true. He then told me a lot of other racist myths that facts lie, absentee fathers, laziness, unqualified hires through affirmative action, presenting ugly argument about why black deaths can be joked about on social media because we aren't worth respecting. I do not want those kind of discussions in my children's, in my child's classroom. Right now, those discussions are ongoing, just as they were when Ben Goze had his argument against homosexuality in class. Discussing a person's value is not a debate. It's devaluing and disgusting. Debating strawberry or cherry is appropriate, as no one is blaming the strawberry for being less desirable. Please just stop. I am begging for every child in your school, stop. Karen Lewis. I think we have two more public comments, Linda, that are in email. Let me open them up. This one is from Lucy Chesley. Good evening. I'm writing with the interest of finding out more details pertaining to the universal pre-K that was mentioned by Dr. Wiles. Summer is right around the corner and as parents, we need to make a decision about childcare for our four-year-old son for the fall. I would appreciate any insight you have for us as well as other community members. Currently, we need to pay a minimum of 50% of our daycare's weekly tuition over the summer in order to hold our son's spot in his classroom for the fall. If we knew whether or not he would be enrolled in pre-K Gilderland, it could possibly save us the added expenses. I'm sure many other families are in similar positions at the present time. I appreciate any information you can give us in a timely manner. Sincerely, Lucy Chesley. And the last public comment. Second here. This is from Andrew Genovese. I think we, as a society, generally miss the point of Ben's commentary and I think we, as a society, are too quick to judge and label each other. I believe he was trying to support rights of folks to a fair and open hearing of their opinions, even if others may disagree with them or find them offensive. Many controversial opinions have either strengthened the ones they challenge or become accepted. This has often been true in science and politics and we should all be careful of the labels we put on people. They are always incomplete and often inaccurate. We may certainly call out ideas and behaviors, but people must always be treated with respect. Isn't that, after all, what equity, diversity, inclusion is all about? Andrew Genovese, member of the Equity and Diversity Committee. Okay. I think that's the last public comment. Do we have any more, Linda? Okay. All right. Next, on the agenda. Board issues, ideas and sharing. Does anybody have anything to share? Ben, I can't tell if your hand is up or if you're just resting. No, it's not up. Okay. Rebecca?
I just wanted to comment on how moved and impressed I was by the recent anti-racism rally that many of us attended last Friday at the high school. This was completely student-driven. It was so well organized. It seemed that every audience member from the students to the adults really kept rapt attention throughout the whole presentation. But even more importantly, I was really moved by multiple students really articulately speaking their truth and voicing their experiences that occurred both inside and outside of school. I think it's important, I think we all agree with this, that as a board, we actively listen to those students' real-life experiences confronting racism, both overtly and more insidiously. The students' comments were really in line with what we've heard from recent graduates and from community members and underscores the need really for us to validate those students' stories of bullying and racism. So, I just wanted to thank GHS for inviting us to that. And then, totally unrelated, I was curious about the preschool planning, only because I've also had many questions from the community in terms of daycare and preschool preparation.
I'm happy to comment on that. So, I'll just provide a tiny bit of context. Completely to our surprise, we were allocated about $640,000 to offer pre-K. It appeared on our aid run when the budget was, state budget was approved. So, we are working to put together a program with partners, though. We don't have space within our own buildings to offer a program for four-year-olds. So, today, we released the request for proposals to the community. We both advertised and sent it directly to several community partners who offer pre-K programs. And so, we'll be seeking their responses to our RFP. It's due on June 11th. And we'll look to see if there are qualified providers with whom we can partner. That process just takes time, however. So, by the time we review the written proposals, we'll need to likely have some level of interviews with some of those partners and then award a contract. It's really tight and I feel very much for our families who are trying to make decisions about what to do in the fall because I just can't predict who the providers will be or any of those things. So, I, I don't know what else to say except we're trying to move as fast as we possibly can to get partnerships established so these funds can be used to support four-year-olds in our community. And I know that's not helpful for the family who wrote in, but we're going as quickly as we can. Just did not see this coming.
Blanca?
I was also gonna ask that, but additionally, Marie, I know you mentioned what the next step is in terms of the turf field, but for folks listening at home who wrote in, so after that committee is formed, then what happens?
So, the committee will work through the month of June and will bring to the board on July 1st some recommendations for what a capital project could look like to go before the voters in the fall, probably October or November. It'll be up to the board on July 1st to determine if they're going to accept those recommendations in some or in part or with some variations. Once, if the board does approve going forward, then there will be a lot of work with our architects and others to get this ready to go for a vote in the fall. And then, you know, the voters will determine what happens next. If it is, if it's approved, then we're also going to need to work quickly with State Education Department in order to get approval. So, we can begin this work during the summer of 2022 and some will spill over into 2023. But the turf, since you asked about that, what happened in the summer of 2022 along with the, the work with the high school track that would become one bigger project?
Okay. Thank you. I think it goes without saying, everybody knows, but I'm all in on this turf field. I think the time has come for it. My youngest child plays field hockey and she's one, thank God for another parent in the district that drove her to the turf field that's being rented at U Albany so that I can- that drove her to the turf field that's being rented at U Albany so that I can attend today. So, um, those comments that came in, that's all very, very true.
Barb?
Uh, if you're still looking for volunteers for that committee, I mean, I'd be glad to serve.
Thank you, Barbara.
I just wanted to second Rebecca's comments about the anti-hate rally on Friday. I was also really encouraged and honestly felt hopeful just in general for the future because these students, I think, you know, they did a great job and they chose to be there on a Friday afternoon in like eighty-degree weather on pavement. It was so hot, but they were enthused and they, they just did a great job. And I, I don't know who all the advisors are for those clubs, but I just want to thank them too. I think the whole thing turned out really well. I was really excited and proud. And I think there's a video, I think there's, it's gonna be to play tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting, Dr. Wiles.
Yes, I saw the sneak preview of it earlier today. It's still in draft form, but the plan is to release it, um, tomorrow. I think the first release will be at the Equity and Diversity Committee meeting, but then it's gonna be out on our social media channel, uh, channels. It's really, really well done.
I just have one more comment about the, um, the DEI position. I know this is just a draft and I'm trying not to be overly critical, but I, I know everybody's looking at it and I really am, you know, hopeful about this position. So I think people are really looking carefully at the language that's used and, um, when I saw central office administrators, it just made me think, oh, well, we call our, um, district, uh, district office. Like, I've never heard it referred to a central office. So to me, it just made, it made me think it was not as thoughtfully put together. And I know it's just a draft, but I just hope that, you know, effort goes into crafting that well so we, you know, get the right person. Blanca?
Um, I was just gonna circle back, um, to what you and Rebecca said about the activity, the student rally. The students shared a lot of, uh, very meaningful and important stories that and at some points were difficult to hear, their own experiences, uh, things they've gone through. And, um, I know there have been, um, inquiries into the need for the Diversity and Equity Committee and this position because we don't have enough data perhaps. Um, we've, we've gotten those questions and I just want to say that those students provided what I would consider to be qualitative data. Their experiences are very powerful and speak to the need for not only the committee, but the position.
Barb?
Totally unrelated. I just want to report on a seminar that NISBA put on, on civic readiness and it was extremely well done. The genesis of the workshop was the fact that following Sputnik and then Kennedy's challenge for us to catch up in the space race. Basically, civic readiness or education was not stressed at all in that the STEM, uh, subjects were brought to the fore. And they've shared statistics that one in four individuals that are tested don't even know that there are three branches of government and a whole wealth of other statistics, things that you would think would be basic information to a, to a society. And so the regions are, are desperately working on trying to beef up civics education. And they have produced a pilot program for this year called Civics Capstone Project. And it's a, a way that youngsters at the high school level, um, can increase their civic readiness. And two of the most interesting people that presented was a, an educator, uh, from Shen, who basically said that, um, what they require of teachers in their district, the teachers should be able to argue both sides of any question and students should not know personal political preferences of their teachers. And she stressed that, uh, intently. And she said that they really stress dialogue, discussing difficult issues and getting students to become critical thinkers. The other thing that they, they pointed out is that there's a lot of student involvement. So that the kids sort of become involved in, in, um, the democratic process. And they mentioned that, uh, there are students on the hiring committees. And I know on occasion we've had students on our hiring committees. I don't know if we have them on all. But, um, one of the things that they find quite valuable is that there is a student representative, you know, on the school board. And I know, I think, Seema, you've, you've mentioned it a few times. And we've never really discussed it in detail or found out exactly how one goes about doing it or even discussed the issue. But she said it's a, it's a valuable example of student involvement. And the gentleman from Syracuse was mentioning that even little children, um, you know, the K to five kids can be involved in learning about what he called food deserts, that some of their elementary students were involved in what he called the scarf project. Whereas they, the kids brought in scarfs and they placed them around Syracuse it, where the homeless population, um, dwelled. And so that for winter, you know, these individuals, you know, would have a little bit of warmth. And he said that in, um, the middle, at, at their middle school, the focus is heavily on the constitution. So that when the kids get, get out of there, they really understand the government in, in, uh, the various things on the constitution. And in high school, he says, they call it active citizenship. They have a youth advisory council and it follows what they call the National Issues Forum in issues-based approach. But again, getting kids knowing who their senators are, you know, who, who represents them, how are they represented? So this capstone project, as I said, um, a number of school districts have applied to become, you know, pilot, uh, projects here. I don't know if we have or not, but, um, it sounds like a very, very interesting concept. And, you know, as you look at the world around us and the fact that so few individuals really know anything about their government these days. As I said, it was, it was a very worthwhile, uh, seminar and it will be posted because it was a free seminar on the NISBA website, uh, you know, if anybody would like to follow up.
Thanks Barb. And I agree, like you mentioned, I've been saying for a while, I know that student can't vote, but to have a student rep on the board, I think would be great. So maybe we can talk about that later. Blanca?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, how can we make that happen? I think, I think we should.
Well, maybe that would be something for the policy committee to look at. You are, happen to be in charge of policy, Barb?
Um, so it's something you could. That goes back many, many years, probably when you first got on the board. But I thought someone had said that you have to put a resolution like before the public for this to happen. But again, that, that's a vague memory. So maybe Marie can refresh my mind because I think she's the one that mentioned that, that is something that the board itself can't do, but either Maria or Jeff could guide us, you know, along the way.
Yeah, I have to refresh my own mind and do a little homework.
Yeah, so we can check that out and see what that requires. Any other word sharing ideas or issues? Barb, is that from before or now?
Sorry.
All right, so I think we need a motion then to, um, we need a motion to adjourn and then a motion to enter executive session. I don't know how we do it on this. Motion to adjourn, Barb, second, uh, Blanca, all in favor? I pass the seven zero. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.